Okay, the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board meeting will now come to order. If I could have a roll call?
John Hutzco, Michael O'Bryant.
Lori G.
John Cutler, Jason Pereske.
Great, thank you. If everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to abide in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on November 6th and one on November 19th. We'll revisit this at the end of the evening, this evening. We don't have anything on the agenda for either of these meetings, so we'll see where we end. No, right? Oh, okay.
You're agreeing, you're agreeing.
I thought you were saying no, you're agreeing.
Don't agree.
No, so we'll revisit this, but we may end up canceling one or both of these meetings, so we'll come back to that. Just a quick note, though, if we do have the November 6th meeting, I believe that's the meeting that's held on Wednesday because our election day is on November 5th, Tuesday. We have one set of minutes that needs to be approved from August 6th. I think I have read through these, does anybody want to offer? Actually, I should see if we have a quorum for the minutes, hold on. We may have to hold this one more time. Nope, we're okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 6th?
So moved, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstain? Right, okay, great, thank you. And we have the series of meeting dates for 2014. Basically, it's still every first and third Tuesday with the exception of our November meeting on Wednesday, the 5th, again for election day, and the 4th of 2014. So do I have a motion to approve the upcoming meeting dates for 2014?
So moved, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The first item on our agenda tonight is an extension for Country Charm Realty and Echo Cottage on Route 82. Do we have anyone here for Echo Cottage and Country Charm Realty? Okay, with the agreement of the board, I'll call this one more time at the end of our meeting tonight. The next item on our agenda is an adjourned public hearing for John Jay Gas Station on Route 52.
Good evening.
Yes, do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, leave us our fourth public hearing on the John Jay Gas Station application. Brief overview of the project, this project's been in front of the board for almost two years now. Trying to come up with a redevelopment plan for the site, existing gas station, the three pumps, the convenience store area, there's a car wash on site. The plan is to demo the existing building, canopy, fueling area, and the car wash area, and then construct a new 3,000 square foot building in the back, be a convenience store with a drive-through, with a Dunkin' Donuts established there. We have 10 or 11, we have 11 queue vehicle traffic configuration around the back of the site. We're providing four fueling stations under a new canopy, providing 14 new parking spaces, and I think the big item is traffic. We've discussed numerous times with the board before. What we're providing for is the future installation, providing DOT degrees for traffic lane at the intersection of Lake Drive and Route 52. Due to the width of Route 52, we have the ability to do some restriping, so there'll be a left turn lane into Lake Drive from 52. There'll also be a left turn in in front of the site. The site currently has four access points, there's two along 52 and there's two along Lake Drive. The plan is to close the closest Route 52 entrance and provide expansion at the existing entrance, either Archway Plaza, and then along Lake Drive, move the entrance further down Lake Drive and retain the rear entrance with some curbing modifications. Site-wise, traffic would enter this direction here, traffic coming this direction would enter here, there's an exit here. Deliveries would most likely come in to the site here, there's an unloading area we're going to have here, fuel delivery will be located here, and the exit will be out through Lake Drive. At the last public hearing, I know we had some concerns regarding hours of operation. The intent is the convenience store operation will be active for 24 hours. We've agreed to limit the drive-through from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And in doing that, another concern that came up was the lighting plan associated with the project. What we've done, we've provided a lighting plan for submission for AKRF to review. In addition to at the last meeting, we spoke about Michelle going on-site with the light meter and just taking some readings out there to see what we have out there now in case there's some spillover from the adjacent sites. And similar to the Hopewell Station, we do have some spillover onto the site. So what we're proposing is underneath the new canopy, we're going to have four rows of three LED lights, they're full cutoff, they shine down, they don't cascade out too far from the canopy just due to the LED light feature. We'll have some lighting associated, you know, in the building itself casting out through the windows. And toward the back, what Michelle and I discussed is possibly doing a light near where the drive-through wraps around, but have it be motion-activated, so in case somebody goes out there for delivery, just take the trash out to the dumpster in the back that the light would kick on just to provide some sense of direction when they are back there.
Is that more, are you picturing ground lighting that would kick on or top-down lighting on the light poles?
Down, yeah, not into the air.
Not into the air, full cutoff, shining down.
Okay.
And I think, just based upon what we've talked about, I think that's the best way to handle the back.
And Brian, would that be mounted on the building, or are you thinking it'd be on a pole out closer to where the trash bin is or something like that?
I actually have it right in the island, right in here. I don't have it on the building, but I have it just off of the building.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
And that way I can project the light to the refuse enclosure but not spill over the property lines.
And that's where the back door of the building is where somebody would walk out?
Right.
Will enough light get to the back parking spaces? Will enough light get to the back parking spaces?
Yes.
Sure, all right. That's probably where the employees are going to park, so...
There's a lot of existing light from other sources out there in the site now.
But are they, are they on at like 1 o'clock in the morning? The existing light?
There's streetlights out there. I don't know, I don't know if the existing lights from the other buildings are, but I think there's plenty of light out there.
Archway is still lit by the way.
Okay, I just want to make sure there's enough light, because that's what, I'm envisioning that's where the employees are going to be parking.
And also the other, which we saw with the Hopewell site, is the convenience store itself, the interior lights are quite bright, so they tend to put a lot of light out into the...
But they're not going to have windows in the back of the building.
Right, in the back of the building, but there will be some probably associated with the drive-through.
I'm just more concerned with people parking in that back, those back spaces.
And the provision would be that it would be motion-activated, so we could set like a five-minute time limit on it?
No, I'm not worried about the motion or not, I'm just worried about enough light being there. All right.
Okay.
Brian, next to those three spots in the back, is that towards Lake Road, is that a light pole there, or is that something, I can't tell with this, it's a little small circle, it looks like another light pole.
Yeah, there's a series of light poles that are out there right now, they're kind of almost in a Y shape, but long enough to let some bulbs underneath them. Those are shown to be removed.
Okay.
So there will be no lighting from our site along that property.
Along the lake.
Right, the intent, and just working on comments from the last meeting, we did provide a landscaping plan to the board, and just based upon the landscape areas that we do show, we're almost providing about 350 plantings themselves, will be a combination of evergreen tree, a lot of fountain grass, evervady, and they will be located, I tried to highlight them in the pictures that you see there, but they'll be along the Archway border, providing evergreen landscaping back here with a large amount of fountain grass, to shade drivers coming down Lake, and this residential property in the back, and also this new road over here. We do provide fountain grass and some other small shrubbery, 24 inches in height, along the boundary between the drive-through and Lake Drive. Working off of what we spoke about last meeting, we met with Dennis Miller, the curbing actually extends into the town right away. So what we did show is an actual maintenance area, get more responsible for all the maintenance of the plantings along that corridor, the made notation on the site plan, and if we need to develop language to facilitate that further on down, we'll work with Tom on that. But the intent is to provide as much shading of that drive-through area as we can.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
What's the sign look like on the corner of Lake?
It's a monument-style.
Okay, it's not going to be gas prices, tall sign?
We did field stone on the bottom, small sign in height, I think we limited it to, I have to check the height, I think it was five feet above, there's a detail back in the page where I can check it out, but we did a two-foot stone wall around the bottom, and then the sign was, I believe, four feet in height above that.
Above, so six feet.
Right, right, and it's also...
Is it set back for him?
Yeah, we have to meet visibility requirements from DOT with the installation of a traffic light, so we'll be pushed back probably from the edge of the road. And speaking to Michelle, and based upon comments from the last meeting, obviously safety of the children, now that we have a new site being constructed, and how we get pedestrians from John Jay to the site. What we did, I don't know Scott, if he can move that over a little bit, but the crosswalk for John Jay is over here, and there is a concrete sidewalk here. In the plans that we submitted, we showed to extend this sidewalk down 52, wrap it into our site here, there's a natural break in the fence here at Archway, so we show a crosswalk coming across our delivery lane that comes into our sidewalk on site. There was also a concern that if we had some students, I guess, coming from John Jay across the site. We did originally, in our last submission, show some landscaping within this fairly narrow, curved island, because we are closing off this entrance here. In this submission, this aerial photo that I gave you, in speaking to Michelle, the thought was maybe we can take that, instead of doing some, instead of low-growth plantings, just have that as a sidewalk along the front and extend it to the edge of Lake Drive. Obviously, with the installation of this traffic light here, the thought was we can provide some kind of additional crosswalk if the DOT allows it, just, it adds, it adds safety measures to the plan, it gives two access points to the site.
There's no sidewalk on the other side of 52, so if you had a crosswalk up by the light, there's no sidewalk on the other side, right?
No.
But I also think that gate is closed, closed most of the day. I mean, it's open for the morning hours and then closed, so by the time anybody's going over between classes, it's closed.
Just, it was just a thought that Michelle and I discussed, and Brendan obviously, I spoke to Brendan about it, but maybe the way we align the traffic light in the future, if they do decide to put something there, it'll be aligned in such a manner that it can be installed without reconfiguring too many things out within that corridor. Some of the other things that we talked about, talked about lighting, fire access, we do show that a WB62 can enter the site and swing through the site in both directions, we can enter from this side, exit out through Lake, and additionally coming in through the site this direction. Speaking of Brendan, he's been working with John Metzger, trying to get the actual turning templates in a format suitable that I can actually run the analysis through the site. And speaking of Brendan, the theory is if you can run a WB62 trailer through the site, the fire truck has a smaller turning radius, so therefore if you can run the interstate style trailer through the site, you can swing an apparatus through the site as well.
And before he has, before there's a final plan, Brian will show the fire apparatus directly out of through the site.
Couple of other things that were mentioned at the last meeting was the phasing of this site and how we're going to construct the site. This is a little bit different than the Route 376 site in that the thought is that in order to remediate the site, as we discussed, I think pretty in-depth last meeting, the majority of the tenementation is believed to be underneath the existing car wash and existing convenience store buildings, so in our phasing plan, we show that the site would be closed down, the buildings would be taken down, site remediated, and then we would eventually start establishing our infrastructure on the inside, and then actual building construction. So what we did is we did, I think, three phases, Joe. And Joe and I have been going back and forth, but from a technical standpoint, we show the intent that the site will be closed, remediated, infrastructure built, and then actual building construction. And then the details behind specifics to erosion, technical control devices, we'll work that out as we move along, but we did submit that forward view.
And infrastructure is going to be the water line, the gas tanks, that sort of thing? Is there other?
Right, we do, we still show the water line coming across, that would probably be in the phase two, once the buildings are down, and we do do the site remediation. I show the site, I show the water line coming across here conceptually, but if you know there's a large utility section here associated with the West Complex, what we spoke about last meeting was we're doing a full strip survey along the corridor above and below ground, utilities are being located. So we'll coordinate the exact location of this crossing, we still show it to be a board across 52. We do have the entrance here to the school, so the exact location would either be somewhere in this vicinity here or this vicinity here. We do have a septic system over in this area associated with this site here, so the likely location is going to be in this general area, but we'll iron that out once we get that strip survey back. But the intent is to show water line across, we'll probably have some kind of a utility usement for that water line and then down Lake Drive, and we show a termination to the end of the property. The intent is to bring water down to the edge of the property, we remain committed to that. I know at the last meeting, we had a, I think, a very informative constructive meeting with the applicant's attorney and his environmental group. Tom may have some additional information specific to the water, because I know him and Tom and Scott have been working to get some answers as far as water extension.
Brian, here are a couple of points. One, placement of handicaps, if it's also raised.
Right.
Where the, if you covered it, I apologize.
Right, we have, the store entrance is off to the side here, there's an entrance about that here. What we did is we do have the handicaps sites located off the side, so they do pull up and you can go around to the entrance of the building. I think originally we had them just generically laid in in front of the entrance before we had the actual site, the elevation established, but we didn't move those handicap spots down in the general area here.
One of the other issues raised in the last one, and I'm not sure it was your to-do, was the whole thing about the spill fund that was discussed, is did, did anyone, do we have any information on the spill fund? The spill fund, that was one of the questions that was raised in the last...
You mean for the water line?
Yes.
Yeah. Basically, the update is, is that there are two, three pieces of information, is number one, DC has pressured the Botini Fuel, and their new attorney has reached out to us, and we're having a meeting with Botini Fuel and their engineers and attorneys next week. And the plan there is to bring them to the table with enough money to pay the cost of extending what, this project, if it's approved, that we all know is bringing water main across into the back of the property. So the phase I'm talking about is then to construct a water line to take care of minimally the homes that currently have the filter system, and then obviously as it traverses to pick up those homes, any home along that route, so that'd be phase one. But that meeting is next week, and DC is very confident or hopeful that the owner is going to be able to reach a funding agreement with us so that we'll be able to proceed. And then secondarily, in a meeting with the Department of Health, they have confirmed that there is sufficient water supply in our Shenandoah Water Line right now without any further upgrades or approvals by the Town of Fishkill to service those homes that are on the port systems. So that's, that's where we are with that.
Beautiful, I think you guys have any thoughts?
One more thing I do want to mention, deliveries. We coordinated the delivery schedule with Hudson Valley Engineering Traffic Analysis, limited deliveries to Was Peak, 9:00 AM to 3:30, and then 7:00 PM to 11:00, Sunday through Friday, and we showed no restrictions on Saturday deliveries. That's placed on the plan, sheet one of the plans so it isn't forcible.
Well, did we have Brendan, I think we were waiting for an opinion from DOT on the traffic light, did we get anything from them as far as that goes?
We haven't at this point. The update that I can give you is that we've been following this pretty closely and every other day contacted the DOT. It is actively being reviewed, but as of today, they haven't provided some good review yet.
Okay, if they say no, what's our plan B?
Well, I think we've talked about, we've talked about the applicant then putting funds in escrow until the case can be demonstrated to the DOT that a signal is warranted. We don't have any, you know, we don't have any confirmation, there's, you know, we have received some oral comments from the DOT and some questions, but you know, nothing has given us an affirmative yes or no at this point. But we do expect that review to be complete, you know, in the very near future.
Okay. And I know Brendan, one of the things that had been raised at one of the, maybe two of the previous meetings, was the potential queuing up on Lake Drive, where we could have cross-traffic blocking the lake ingress?
Yep.
I see that the entrance is being moved back, so we'll queue one or two additional cars, but do you have the worst-case scenario from the traffic analysis, how many cars would queue on Lake, just to give us a feel?
Just first looking at the existing condition without the signal, you know, the concerns that were brought up by some of the residents are actually shown to be true by the analysis of the existing conditions, that in some cases during, especially the AMP, there could be queues of up to 10 to 12 cars on Lake Drive, which would then obviously block entrances. Right now, it seems pretty comfortable that there can be at least four cars queued, and depending on the final configuration of the lanes, being, you know, there's enough room out there to put a right turn lane, a left turn lane, and then the receiving lane, so three lanes on Lake Drive, there's going to be enough room to comfortably fit four cars. With a signal, my office did run what's called a queue analysis, and it's based on a confidence interval, but what it shows is that for 95% of the time, the queue is going to be at a maximum of about two cars. So there's going to be 5% of the time where it's going to exceed that 2%, or that, those two cars, but you know, the 95% confidence interval is that the queue is only going to be two vehicles.
So if you're able to have two lanes coming up towards Lake Drive onto 52, onto 52 from Lake, it looks like you'll be able to have consistent right turn out, and then really what's queuing are the cars in the middle, the middle lane, knowing there's an ingress lane, and then the two egress lanes, you'll have them queue to turn left on 52.
Right, but, and what the analysis shows is that that's only going to be, going to be two cars, and basically that's based on the fact that, you know, we're having a signal now with a cycle, and as that cycle runs through, you're not going to have cars jammed up there for five or, you know, seven minutes. Now, every, you know, every 90 seconds, you're going to see those cars going to be able to pass through that queue, and that's why it's so much less than the existing unsignalized condition.
Okay. And then Brian, just staying with the traffic around the site, the egress and ingress around the site, the exit lane on the, on the east side of the property remains intact and big enough for any car within that drive-through lane to escape?
Right, I think what we do, we're doing some new curbing along the side, but yes, curbing along there does everything, we'll have new curbing.
They could have come in here, but...
Okay. But if there's truly like 12 cars queued up here, if the 12 cars says, you know what, I'd rather just pull around and park or whatever, they're going to be easily able to get out and around.
Right.
Okay, and then the menu board, is how many cars back?
Six cars.
Six, okay, so it's before they're kind of making that turn around the top of the building?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
And I think we have a total of 11 cars queued before they actually get into the travel lane in front of the building, which leads into another revision that we made. We expanded travel range to be 26 feet, we shifted the canopy slightly on the same line toward Archway Plaza, so we do show 26 all around, all sides. I think before we had, we were shy in some areas, 23 feet, 22 feet, but now we're a full 26.
Are you doing any curbing between the drive-through lane and where that's seven, there's seven spaces across the front of the building where that's seven spaces, or is that just striping?
That'll be asphalt curbing, right in front of the crosswalk.
No, over here, where you're exiting the drive-through?
Exiting the drive-through, I just have a striping. We can show a curbing, but it is rather tight in there, you probably only have eight or nine inches in the center, so it'd have to be paved, or not paved, but it'll probably actually be cement across. I just did...
Are you showing you're going to need these spaces, all these spaces?
I think we have a requirement of 13.5, we show 14. We're not including pump spaces, though. The only reason why I showed a stripe is just for plowing efforts.
Yeah, I mean, Michelle, I guess I'm thinking maybe, maybe this is a situation where knowing that there's spots at the pumps, we don't have, we get rid of one of these spots just so that cars aren't coming out of the drive-through right next to a car that's parked going into, because you're going to have a driver's side door opening right up into that lane if you're parked there, unless you back in. You see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just thinking we get rid of that spot.
We can show that, what we can do is we can show that curved, and we can actually provide some low-growth landscaping, because now we'd have a full 12, I think we show two feet now, so we'd have spaces 10 feet, so you'd have 12 feet of the actual planting area, say 11 feet.
Yeah, I mean, just, I just think if you have somebody's driver's door opening up and you've got somebody pulling out of the drive-through looking down to put their coffee aside, I don't know, I'm just, I see bad things happening there.
So we'll do six spaces along the front, set us up.
And take out the westmost space. So we don't have anything in our code that allows us to count a parking spot at a filling station?
We have the discretion of eliminating it.
We've done this before, though, it's, do that in Hopewell, and...
Okay, so if you just update your parking and note that you're one spot short in terms of the calculation, but you have the spots where people will be parked at the pumps, I think that works. I'm comfortable with that, if the board's comfortable with that. Brian, are three spaces in the back, is that always going to be employee parking, or is that...
I show all three spaces signed with employee parking only.
Okay.
Is that enough employee parking, or do you think you'll have more people on duty at the same time?
Okay, so theoretically, they'd probably park up at the westmost sites where there's four spaces out on the west side or something like that, by the store, okay?
We can put a notation on that, if required.
Okay. Other questions or comments from board members? Brendan, anything else we should go over with traffic?
No, I think Brian touched on it all, although the plan doesn't show it, you know, the intention is for a left turn lane into Lake Drive and into the site, and at a minimum making, if the signal is approved, to make that signal, you know, pedestrian-friendly so it can account for any future crossing there.
Okay.
We talked about fire truck access, and I think what Brian alluded to is he did, was able to shift the site a little bit to the north, so he did create a little more space in and around the pumps, and especially the front of the pumps, so the people that come in off of 52, there's a little more room, a few feet more room to get into access to those pumps, so that was a very worthwhile adjustment, so...
Okay. I think it also moved the entrance back from 52 on Lake Drive, that first entrance on Lake Drive.
Right.
Probably lets it queue much better.
Gives us a little, a few more feet there.
Okay. Michelle, I know we talked about lighting and landscaping. Have you had a chance to look at what Brian submitted?
Yes, yes. And actually, I have a memo from the landscape architect that signs off, and she was happy with the selection of the plants and the robustness of the landscape plant.
Okay. And then the lighting?
Yes, the lighting's fine. I went out there with my, I measured. I, you know, I recommended that he do very, I recommended that he do very minimal lighting because of the fact that there was already existing ambient light, and didn't want lights in the back that could potentially be seen by the residential properties. So we were, that's why we suggested having the one that goes on and off with just a motion detector.
What about under the canopy? The LED lights are sufficient, and there's nothing lighting the canopy itself that would shine out?
No, it's my understanding that it's going to be similar, if not exactly, like the one down here at Hopewell. And that one was in existence when I measured for the Hopewell gas station. So it was twenty-seven-foot candles, I believe, underneath the actual canopy, but it's very restricted to the footprint of the canopy and very directed, the light. So it's quite bright underneath, but it's not, it doesn't shine up into the sky or out.
Okay. And I know we talk about this sometimes, but the Dust County Greenway had some examples for gas stations that they had sent out maybe a year or two ago. It sounds like this is inconsistent with that.
Yeah, this is consistent with the newer technology for the lighting and gas canopies.
Okay. Joe, how about engineering stormwater? I know the phasing plan, we talked about a little bit a minute ago.
For stormwater, as it's showing on as an aerial overlay, they are adding, you know, a significant amount of landscape green parts to the site that are not, you know, that are currently paved. So we take that to show that the runoff will not increase based on the amount of new pervious surface. So that's been, you know, put on the record that they're going to reduce the amount of pavement. They're going to maintain the current drainage patterns that they already have, splitting the site, some, the majority heading toward the rear and then the front coming back towards Route fifty-two. So the grids show that the pavement, or the, you know, the drainage is going to be split by those two directions as it currently is directed. So we had a few comments about the erosion control measures, the phasing plan. Just some clarifications on different elevations and some details. We have some comments about the remediation, just having some specific references to the spill closure numbers and permit numbers of DEC issues. And then providing the town with correspondence as it's available from the DEC.
And I think you mentioned the erosion control plan. I just want to make sure, because I know we've had some comments where we've seen some runoff going into the drainage basins that exist there now. Just making sure that we've got within the plan everything we would need to control all that.
Yeah, we mentioned include the sturdier inlet protection measures to prevent that sort of thing. And also identifying a little bit clearer piles that are, you know, the imported clean material versus any contaminated soil. You know, segregate them, keep them on plastic or whatever the DEC requirements are. Just try to make notes of that in the phasing, which Brian has done that, so.
Brian, I'm thinking, would it, I don't know what the DEC requires, but would it be reasonable just to ask you if you're going to stockpile soil on site during this remediation process? Just keep something on file with us in the planning office, so if somebody wants to see what's going on out there, we have a current, here's where we are and here's what's there right now, something like that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We can keep Scott's office updated on actions that are ongoing on site.
Great.
And if materials removed, where it's going, and just a brief schematic. Somewhere that we do with our weekly inspections on construction sites now, we'll just amend it to this.
That's what I'm thinking. And I don't, I don't know, does, the DEC is certainly going to be monitoring the cleanup, but are we planning to have an environmental monitor for, on behalf of the town, watch over this? Is that necessary, or is that?
I don't think we have planned on it, no.
Okay. All right. So then are there reports at the DEC files or something that we can just make sure we, if you can make sure we get copies of them as you receive them? That way, we've got information readily available on it.
Yeah, I think we asked for some notes on the plans. It states they'll copy the town when these reports are made available.
Any reports, I mean, this is-
DEC will be on the job almost daily.
That's fine, that's fine.
Anything with DEC issues, back and forth, we respond, so obviously we'll forward on, discount this.
Maybe we'll just have something like, as a condition of the building permit, that we get the complete file, you know, the closure and all that stuff prior to getting a building permit.
And I'm just saying, through the remediation, as long as we have copies here at the town and kind of understand what's happening at the site, that's, that way it'll help. If we see something going on, or if residents see something going on, we're able to understand what's out there. Anything else, Joe, from your memo?
Had some comments about the water main, but I think we touched on those and how that will be implemented. And, you know, it is noted on the plans already. So those are the major items.
Scott, I know we talked a little bit about the water line, and we're still waiting to figure out where the best place to bring them across the street is. Is there anything else we need to talk about before we open up for public comment?
No, I think we have to have a little flexibility based on the utility survey, ultimately getting a contractor and putting everyone's head together to find out what the best place is going to be for it.
Okay.
So I have no problem with that.
Anything else with the plan we should talk about?
No, I mean, I think once we nail down a spot, you know, they'll dictate orientation of pipe fittings, stubs, et cetera, like that. So I think that might be a little premature.
Okay. And Tom, I know you gave us the update on the status of the negotiations and the water talks right now. Anything else we should cover? All right, then, let's open up for public comment. If anybody here would like to speak for or against the John Jay Gas Station on Route fifty-two, we'll have you come on up and sign in on our clipboard, and then we'll call you up in order you sign in.
Good evening. Alan Colodner, Eleventh Circle Drive, Hopewell Junction. I didn't have a whole lot to say, but I have a bunch of questions that I'd like to see if I can get some answers to.
Okay.
In no particular order. During the well, during the construction and demolition, will the properties that had at one point in time been affected with the MTB contaminations, will their wells be tested?
That's a good question. Is that-
Well, that would be the DEC protocol. Whatever DEC's protocol is with respect to reclamation will have to be done.
But now they're going to be disturbing the site?
I understand that, but that's all-
It's predicated on what their-
On what DEC has approved.
Yeah, that they have, they're required to-
And their environmental engineer has to submit a plan to DEC and DEC-
Okay. I think that the applicant touched on this, and this is good news, that they're going to limit the hours of the drive-through. Could that be a condition of the?
It will be on their site plan, and yes, it's a condition.
Great.
Yes.
They mentioned a sign that's going to be five and a half feet somewhere on the property, I wasn't sure. So when you're pulling out of Lake, will that be a restriction on the view to be able to make a safe turn?
No, they'll have to place a sign in a place where it doesn't restrict site distance. And if the traffic light is there, that-
I'm discounting the traffic light for this discussion.
No, no. What I was going to say is the site distance required if the traffic light is there might be slightly different than if there isn't going to be a traffic light initially. So the final placement of the sign will be based on what the condition will be when they open.
Because at times, when you're coming out of the property, and there are cars parked here, you can't see down fifty-two.
Right.
So I'm not sure if this is where the sign is?
Yes. If you, if you look in the, in that green area, that's going to be all landscape, and that monument's a sign.
I will have, I will have a site limitation for somebody coming down.
You should also be aware that New York State DOT controls a town road intersection with state highway within a hundred feet. So when the DOT actually gives a permit for the modifications, they're going to want to see where the sign is and the divisibility.
And they'll determine whether it's-
And they'll either say, yes, it's okay with us, or they're going to say, no.
There has to be sufficient site distance.
Great, okay.
I don't want to make it sound like the DOT may say it's a big block.
It won't be, yeah, it won't be your choice. It'll be an absolute. Okay, now, cars decide they're going to come in the lot, and the property is congested for whatever reason. They decide they're going to park on both sides of Lake, run into the store, which they do today. There's no parking signs, or no standing, or no stopping signs.
Well, that's the regulation that the town board can enact for no parking on a public road.
But it has nothing to do with this application.
It has nothing, it would be monitored, and obviously becomes a problem. Then the town board can add no parking signs along that area and make it a no parking.
So that's a town board issue?
Correct. That's a parking.
Thank you. A lot of what the traffic consultant is mentioning is predicated on a light. If a light doesn't occur, never happens, we've heard in the past that this intersection is an F. Will this intersection continue to be an F, or a D? I wasn't sure. It was pretty lousy, whatever it was. So with no light, and the increased traffic we now have, does it become an F minus? Does it remain an F? The five percent number that you were using about queuing, I may or may not disagree with you, however.
F is as low as it goes, so an F could be any, you know, once it hits F, it doesn't-
Be an F or a really bad S.
Right.
Right, okay.
But again, I just wanted to mention, if the DOT doesn't approve a light there at this time, we would still expect the applicant to escrow money with the town so that in the event the traffic situation changes, or it comes to pass that, you know, queuing there is what we expect it would be with this site, then we'd be able to go back to the DOT at that time.
Somebody was, I think Brian was mentioning employee parking, that there's going to be three spots in the back of the property.
Correct.
The applicant then mentioned that, as usual, about two people in the store, maybe five during peak periods. The current store in Archway Plaza has four to five people on a Saturday, and at a minimum, three people there all the time. So if this is going to have storefront, convenience store, drive-through, I question the number of employees that will be in the building.
Okay.
And if Brian had mentioned about them moving the site plan back to alleviate some congestion that might occur with cars queuing to get into the, into the pump spaces, if they're concerned about that, then if they reduce the amount of, number of pumps, that should alleviate the queuing of these people trying to get into the spot. So that goes back to our original concern as neighbors in Lake City, is that this development, while is very nice, is still too big. And that is our issue. So now I'll go back to my prepared comments. The applicant originally brought the project to the board, and was viewed by many, if not most, as being too large for the area. The applicant then started making enhancements and modifications, or recommending changes such as moving roads and traffic light, striping, and new sidewalks, which are great. However, it made the project even larger and less attractive to the people who live in Lake City. This raised the size and scope of this, of this, and subsequently was withdrawn, and now the original plan is back, and, which was unfavorable to begin with. So it looks like a bait and switch, like we'll go with our project, we'll tell them all these terrible things we're going to do, we'll take those off the table, and now you're back to our original project. This project is too big for the area. There's too many pumping stations, it's too large a building, the drive-through is unnecessary, the hours are too long, there's too many traffic concerns and too many safety concerns. The applicant's representatives continually state that what's happening on the gas station on Route nine, in front of Allsport, the traffic congestion, et cetera, the queuing of cars out onto Route nine, the people pulling in exits, the delivery, should not be a concern here, because this is not Route nine. Well, if this is not Route nine-
I don't think any of us has said it wasn't a concern because it's not-
No, I'm saying the applicant, the applicant's representatives had said that it shouldn't, this should not be a concern of all of the development because of the size of the building, then why are they putting a building up that's, and a number of pumps that are adequate for Route nine, if fifty-two will never become a Route nine? I had a question that came up, is there was a request for a drive-through at the Dunkin' Donuts down at Taconic Plaza some years back when that project was developed, and that was turned down.
No, it wasn't.
No, it was-
It was approved, the applicant never-
Never did it. Okay, then my mistake. I stand corrected. You know, and I'll ask this question again, is why does the applicant's deed outweigh those of the tax-paying homeowners in Lake City? We're all for the development of the project and the property, and whatever he's doing is wonderful. But again, it's too big, it's causing too much of a concern for the eighty-plus homeowners that live in the back. The traffic, the safety, the size of the project is just too large. We'd all like to see the property cleaned up, we'd like to see a new convenience store, we'd like a limited number of gas pumps, we'd love a Dunkin' Donuts without a drive-through, and we'd like the traffic diverted back onto fifty-two as currently designed. This will significantly decrease the pressure of traffic onto Lake Drive. The inconvenience, the most important, the danger that the project would be created by channeling the traffic into a residential street, which now acts as our entry and exit point for the neighborhood. And the property size of this, the property for this project is too small for what they're intending to do. So I hope the board takes that into consideration. I am sure that you've heard our issues and our concerns. I still think this project needs to be downsized somewhat. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have somebody else on our list?
Mr. Falcone? Bob Falcone, McQ and Terrace. Alan pretty much summed it all up. You know the people don't want it, the people that live there. We don't, I don't have to say that. He said it, we've been saying it at all these past meetings. There's nothing more we can say. You know, we're not, we're not trying to take everybody on. It's a beautiful project. Oversized, yes. We don't need a drive-through for a donut. You just don't need it, okay? There's Dunkin' Donuts right next door, again, where they shut the cars off and save on the emissions. You people, I'm hoping, I'm hoping to take into account that these cars are going to be running all the time they're there, and the fumes are going to be coming out, and Al is the closest house to it, and I feel sorry for him. So please, take that into consideration. Never mind the children that don't look where they're walking. If anyone goes to school, has kids there, you know them kids walk right across. They don't, they don't walk in that crosswalk. Maybe ten percent. The rest divert this way, they divert this way, they're running to the cars, they're looking on their machines that they're looking, their radios, whatever. They're not paying attention. I feel if this goes through, somewhere down the line, somewhere, sometime coming up, somebody's going to get hurt. This plan is an abortion. It's too big. Please, try and do something with it. We have a lot of kids there. They run, they walk back and forth, they ride their bikes. It's a populated area for children, don't mind adults. The school's right across the street. Please take that into consideration, okay? And that's about all I can say, all right? Oh, one other thing. On that Dunkin' Donuts, is there's going to be microphones outside, loudspeakers? How many cool artists you want? Extra ice? Is that what you're going to have to listen to at night? The people that are closest to it, because you know that that travels at night. So would you like that, listening to that? Go to any Dunkin' Donuts, any McDonald's, and listen to the noise that's out of them speakers, their microphones. You've got to take this into consideration. We're paying taxes here. We're the ones that live there. We don't want to hear this. So please, you are the people in charge. Have common sense, common decency. If your mother, or your father, or your sister was living on that block, would you like to listen to that, or have them listen to it? I don't think so. So please, have a heart, okay? Get this to the right size. We love it. It's a beautiful thing. We want to see the neighborhood upgraded. Want to see new shrubbery that they can abandon, like they abandoned the grass on the road. Doesn't matter. But please, worry about the kids, worry about the people that live there. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else to speak for or against the John Jay, sorry, the John Jay Gas Station on Route fifty-two? Brian, why don't you come on back up? I think we, I think we covered the site distance with the signs and the DEC monitoring. We'll just make sure we have documentation within the town for that. The number of employees in the building, if the current store that we think might be moving over, it has more employees now, is there an expectation that that changes? The number of employees in the building, if the current store that we think might be moving over, it has more employees now, is there an expectation that that changes for some reason or?
The employees, mostly kids, and we're being trusted by the parents.
Okay.
The parents, we have a lot of Dunkin' Donuts.
So maybe more, but not all of them have cars?
Yeah, not every employee has a car.
Okay. Thank you. I know we've talked about this before, but Tom, can I just have you review with us the, the reason that we're looking at these changes? Is because there's a law that allows when there's remediation of a site like this.
Right, when a property is subject to remediation, it can clean up contamination under DEC permit. Then even though the property may be non-conforming in certain ways, the zoning ordinance allows the property to be remediated and the structure rebuilt.
Okay, and it allows certain expansion of the use.
Correct, just like any non-conforming property is allowed to be increased up to fifty percent. So that's the same as the square footage of all the buildings.
Okay, so right now we have at the site, I just wanted to step through, right now we have at the site, there's four filling stations and three pumps, is that correct? Or five pumps?
Four, four pumps.
Sorry. Four filling spots, four pumps, and you're moving to?
Well, existing, there's three pumps.
Three and six.
Three pumps, six.
Three and six.
Right.
Three current pumps. With how many filling spots?
Six, six filling positions.
Six positions, then we're going to four pumps and eight positions. So that is within the fifty percent increase allowable. And if I look at the building size, do we have the original, the original footprint of the buildings? I'm not sure the car wash is a one-for-one swap, but the car wash and the convenience store.
Existing building, I think you can also count the canopy too, if I remember correctly, going back a ways, but.
Well, but your canopy is kind of already taken up by the new pumps that you have.
So we're, we're twelve oh two for the existing convenience store, and we're seventeen eighty-five, seventeen fifty-five for the car wash. And I believe we were to be able to take full credit for both buildings as a combination.
All right, which would be about twenty-nine hundred feet, and you're at three thousand?
We're just a hair over three thousand, we're three thousand seventy.
Thirty-one hundred, I'll call it thirty-one hundred. So you're, you're with.
We're within the.
Lower fifty percent.
Within the increase of use. The drive-through is certainly a different use than the car wash, the convenience store is probably a one-for-one swap. Is there, is there anything that tells us about, I mean, the traffic from a car wash, there's no way it approaches a drive-through. I don't know how we would measure that in terms of expansion of the site. We're limiting the hours that the, that the drive-through is going to operate. Brian, we'll talk about the speaker in a second because I think you may be able to point that in a direction where it's actually facing the Archway Plaza instead of facing. That may be how you have it, I just can't tell on the plan whether it's angled right now or not, but we can probably make sure it's pointing towards the commercial building.
I think the menu board is pointed, pointing toward the refuse enclosure, just, just for visual standpoint, the speaker's pointed toward Archway, it's actually angled.
Within the, within that message board. Michelle, is there, is there a typical reading we would do for decibel level or something like that at like the edge of the property, just to make sure that it's not?
There are, there are limitations in the town's noise ordinance with respect to spill all of the boundaries, et cetera.
Right, but is that, I mean, I don't know what the typical drive-through speaker.
They have.
Decibel level.
I don't know.
There are standards, definitely. So Brian, can you just make sure that the plan notes what the decibel level will be and that the speaker, even though the sign may not point towards Archway, that the speaker will point towards Archway?
Right, whatever, whatever the town code permits will reflect that on the site plan as part of the condition.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I kind of digressed from the square footage, but the square footage of the building is the same, I don't know how we would, since it's the same, I mean theoretically, it could have been a much larger building, it's a smaller building.
Right.
But we, we do have the drive-through use. I don't know how we would measure that in terms of percent increase of use.
Well, the drive-through, that's been previously interpreted that that's a customary thing with respect to business of these types.
I mean, this is our business district, this is a state highway it's sitting on, I recognize it does also border a town road, but to me, I guess I'm, if I wanted to see this anywhere, I'd want to see it on the state highway, I guess, but. And anybody have other comment or other?
No, I agree.
Okay. All right. And Brian, just to confirm with the school, I recognize we probably do have a lot of pedestrians that are going to move through this site. You have, you have us, you have students able to get from the school across Archway up into your site. Is there a way that they can leave your site on the west side safely? Is there any, anything that either gets them to the back of the property to go back into the development or across the street if they're continuing up to fifty-two?
We show, we show the crosswalk, we show, we show the concrete sidewalk going to the edge of fifty-two in Lake Drive.
Okay. I'm sorry, you said that before, that's right, that's why that's not green.
Right. And then the Lake Drive itself is actually, the shoulders are paved, that's actually a pretty wide stretcher there, it's actually thirty-six feet. We do show some feathering toward the adjacent parcel, parcel to make it a full thirty-six. So they do have paved shoulders past the, past the white line that actually goes down back toward Lake City.
The right turn line will tie, will use up to thirty-six feet, right?
From, from the entrance, from the entrance forward.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Scott was bringing up the fact that if it does fall out that the lane configuration is a right turn, a left turn, and a receiving lane at the intersection, that width will be used up. You know, so we can, you know, what we might look at is even extending that sidewalk around the corner up to that first entrance. And then after that, you know, the shoulder, and I'm not, I'm not sure there's a white line out there today, but you know, that could be part of this.
The shoulder of Lake would pick it up?
We could, yeah, we could put a fog line in on, on, on Lake Drive to make sure that it was delineated anyway, that it's a safe area for pedestrians to walk.
Okay.
We have no problem extending the sidewalk up as Brendan's mentioned, that can be a condition.
I just, I, I do recognize, we certainly see students walking today, so I can imagine when this is, when this is open, it's, it will be a destination, so.
And I think, you know, once we hear back from the DOT and if they're on board with the signal, you know, it would be my thought that we would touch base with the, with the high school again. And let them know of this potential, because you know, there could be some minor adjustments to their facility to be able to have a crossing at Lake.
A safer crossing.
Safer crossing, yeah.
Okay. And you'd keep the crossing where it is now, up, up at the light where the, where everybody enters today?
It's there and it's approved, but I mean, it isn't under any signal control, it's a, you know, it's a mid-block crossing.
Are there other questions or comments from board members? Brendan, nothing in my notes says that there's anything we need additional on the, on the traffic, I know we're waiting for DOT comment, but I don't think that stops us from closing the public hearing. Michelle, you have had and had a chance to review the lighting plan, the landscape plan, so there's nothing outstanding as far as that goes. Joe, I know you have some comments that are still outstanding, are you comfortable that they're minor and wouldn't change the site plan or?
Yeah, I believe so. Things we've, you know, had comments on before, it's just with the different changes, it kind of adds or twists, puts a little twist on it, but it's, these aren't major items.
Okay. Does the board have any concern about closing the public hearing at this time? Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then what we would do is we would schedule for decision at our next meeting, knowing that we have nothing on our November sixth agenda. Are you okay if that gets pushed out a little bit, or do you need some, is there something, I'm not sure what you have planned right now or if it's?
We'd like to have most available.
Okay.
If we do November sixth, that would be great. We can make it.
Well, it's going to be an extensive neg deck and everything, so I think, maybe a little time.
A little time.
Okay, November nineteenth? Is that, is that sufficient?
Here is, it's November nineteenth, we'd like to do the sixth, but it's the nineteenth.
Okay.
To have a complete.
So we'll put this, we'll put this on for decision, review of the neg deck and for decision on November nineteenth?
Seventy-five and six.
Yep.
What Tom is saying is he requires some extensive writing, it's not drafted yet.
Okay.
All right, decision on November nineteenth. Thank you guys. All right, the next item, actually, before we do that, I know we have a few students in the audience, if you guys want to come up, if you need us to sign any of your paperwork, we're happy to do that. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, we'd love to have.
We would love to have.
Any of us can sign for you. You made it through, you're fine.
We ran five minutes.
What we're hoping is if there ends up being a traffic light here, that they may give you a different way to get entry. Well, we're hoping we'll have a crosswalk there. Thank you guys. Okay, the next item on our agenda is one thousand and one Route three seventy-six LLC, on Route three seventy-six in Van Winkleings, so hello?
How are you all tonight?
Good.
Good. I am representing the one hundred and one Route three seventy-six Sunshine Orthognics. Basically, I'm Jackie from Superior Signs, and we just want to move the sign from one location to another.
And I think, do we have the, the map that shows that it's a fairly minor change? And do we have the map here? So your current sign is back a little bit further into the property?
Right, yes, and there's also another one on the other side of the parking lot.
Say it one more time.
There's another sign also on, let me see, I can't see it from there.
That's all right, you can come on up, that's fine. This is three seventy, uh, that's eighty-two, sorry.
Eighty-two. Right there, milling and paving.
This is one thousand and one LLC.
I saw that.
Or sorry, it's ready to.
You're looking at the wall, man.
Do you have the right map?
Yep, I have the right one right here. Is that your current sign right here?
Sorry, don't worry.
Well, I'm beyond that now.
Okay.
Boy, I'll give my decision.
This is the, going into the parking lot here, gas and toilet area over here, we want to put a sign over here.
Also be a busy agenda November.
There's another one here, and they're taking them both down.
Okay, so if, if you guys want to come on over so we can see, so you have, you currently have a sign here and a sign here, and we're replacing both of them?
No, they're taking them down, and we're just putting one over.
Well, I mean, it's the potential, if it's not placed.
You have it drawn here, is that for us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And is the, the size of the signs similar to what's there now?
Yeah, it's basically, yeah.
Is it lighted or does it have footlights internally?
It's an electric sign.
Okay.
It's basically, it's going. This is what the sign looks like, which was approved by the. It's an electric sign with the LED.
So we're going from two signs to one sign? And it looks like it's further away from the driveway, so less, less issue with site distance.
It's about seventeen feet.
Okay. From the edge of the pavement? Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Anybody from the board have questions?
Do you have an issue with it?
Not long, it may be setback, I mean, the site distance.
Yeah, it looks like it's being waited for both driveways, so I think it'll have less, less interference with site distance, probably the one that, that's there now. They look like they're roughly the same.
Is that a forty you have or fifty-five?
Brendan, Michelle, Joe, any questions or comments? Scott, you're okay with it? Are we comfortable this is a minor site plan change?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah.
So do I have a motion to approve the replacement of the two existing signs at one thousand and one Route three seventy-six LLC? To the single sign in the center of the property that borders Route three seventy-six?
So, second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Per Engineering Department.
And I was just going to say, per.
They got to stake it ahead of time and we have to go out and confirm the location.
So you'll need to follow the proper procedure for installing the sign, but just make sure that if it does end up in a slightly different location, Scott, if we can update the map that's on file.
So what do you want me to do?
Just stake out the boundary of the sign.
Okay.
Maybe a piece of ribbon and a couple wooden posts, something that I can clearly know where the sign's going.
And when are you going to look at that, when I stake it out, when I call you and say it's all staked out?
Could be Thursday, could be Friday, whenever you get it staked out. Building Department.
Call Building Department.
Okay. Very good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Take care, have a good night.
You too. Okay, the next item on our agenda is East Fishkill Provisions on Old Hopeful Road. That's all right, don't worry.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
My name's George Mistake, is owner of East Fishkill Provisions, this is my son Gus, future owner of East Fishkill Provisions.
Wonderful.
He doesn't fire me.
Today.
So you have requested to have a, a small addition put onto the building or a small.
Storage container.
Storage container added to the site.
Correct.
Is it going to be attached to the building or sit next to the building?
Beside the building.
Okay, okay, and again, do we have a map here just so we can all make sure we're looking?
I think I have the right one this time.
I'm not looking at you, I wasn't going to look at you this time. All right, and you've been in front of the zoning board for your setback variances, and I know we don't have minutes yet from the zoning board meeting, but Pam, it was approved at the zoning board?
No, they didn't close it, they're going to close it based on what you do tonight.
So the zoning board hasn't approved it pending what the planning.
Well, they want to know, because the proposal is, is to have you, if you approve it as a letter modification, as you will, to plan, then the zoning board knows they can proceed without any further issue with the planning board. You know, it's the chicken before the egg, we always get into these ramblings, so they don't want to step on your toes. And they, so they said, we'll close it, we'll hold our decision until you make sure that the zoning, uh, planning board's okay with it.
Okay, so.
So it's a condition, basically.
Yeah.
So I know you gave us a letter that explained that this is going to be used for some equipment storage, but primarily to provide power in the event of storms or something like that, so that you're able to operate even without power to the site.
Correct.
And you're going to use a quiet run generator?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it inside the building you generated, is the question?
My son has a picture here if you'd like to take a look at.
It'll actually be running inside the container.
In that?
It is running, it was retired in the Merritt sixty building. Ran indoors in the boiler room, in the actual, so it is equipped with a muffler and a restricted intake.
What is this building, a generator building?
We're hooked off a few more pictures, so we got it.
So are you saying?
Maybe just subject to our, our noise.
So are you saying it runs constantly or it would only be run to test it and?
It's, it's on an automatic, so in the event of power failure, it does kill the main and then runs.
So the refriger, is refrigeration equipment, everything in this?
Um, the, yes, well, some of the larger equipment we have that can't be carried upstairs would be stored in that unit, but this is large.
So it's connected to the regular power usually, and then this just trips on?
Oh, yes, that's, okay.
And our, and our noise ordinance has an exemption for generators in during an emergency power thing, they're exempt. And the testing, there's a limitation on the amount of time, you can do whatever to, I don't want to say it's like once every thirty days for thirty minutes, whatever the criteria is, that's in the noise.
So do.
This one, sorry.
I was just going to say, do we expect that this would run quieter because it's in the building or because it's a metal building, it's going to echo more?
It is going to be muffled by the actual building, plus the intake and exhaust is created to run quieter, and it is natural gas, so the actual operating would be like a lot quieter, like a forklift running. would be like a lot quieter, like a forklift running inside a building from the entire versus diesel and whatnot, so it will be quieter.
Okay.
So George just said that it's also going to be storage too.
Right.
So is it, there going to be a divider in there or something separating storage from the generator, or?
Not unless there is something for code regulation, but, uh, the stuff storing in there would be, uh, equipment that is really just larger metal things like, uh, retired equipment or spare, uh,
But would it be like gas-powered lawnmowers, or would it be?
No, it would be like, uh, we have an ice cream machine that's not used, can't put the stairs to the pathways.
So nothing that's storing fuel?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a building permit requirement, so.
We'll evaluate that.
That would take care of the, uh, safety issues inside.
But they're saying nothing that's, nothing stored inside.
I know, but as far as the, like Jason's referring to the entry ability, uh, problem somebody gets trapped in, whatever the requirement is.
You know, there's a generator in the back of it, you know, and everything's piled up in the front.
Are there multiple doors to this structure?
There will be multiple doors.
Okay, so.
There'll be an access door.
Because that's an actual container.
Right, I see that.
Yeah, so it's got doors on both ends.
Is there any?
No, one end.
No, they're going to cut doors.
We're going to put it over there.
You've got to put it, okay. Because whatever the code requires for it, they're going to have that.
Yeah.
I don't know what it requires.
I don't know what, yeah.
So the reason you're be- The reason you're before the zoning board is because this, this is, if, once installed, would be a little bit close to your side yard setback?
Was it side yard setback?
Yeah, and it's larger than, it's a larger than the allowable for a shed or accessory structure.
Right.
Okay.
So it's no, and-
There's two.
No, he, he does need a side yard setback.
Right.
Two or three feet each.
Right.
But it's also a change to a site plan.
This is, this property-
Is this an A or B thing?
It really is because accessory structure.
This is, uh, well, uh, this is a very unusual site in a residential zone, it's pre-existing, non-conforming. That's why they had to go to the zoning board for a lot of it. And one might think, and there is no original site plan, right, because the property was this way.
Correct.
So there's nothing to theoretically amend by this board, and that's why as a minor, you know.
Zoning board had a public hearing?
Yes.
Any issues with the public at all?
And the neighbors were notified, you know, just they would be there. There was no comment, wasn't there?
No one came to the public hearing.
All right.
And you're painting it?
I don't live there.
Painting it to match your-
Tom, the action by the planning board tonight would be, are we able to approve this as a minor site plan pending zoning board approval, or do we just say our state intent?
I think your, I think your resolution would be that this is a, a minor modification to the site, not requiring a full site plan approval and that you accept it, uh, as a minor modification.
Pending a zoning board approval of any variance.
Well, subject, obviously, to compliance with all the codes and ordinance.
I'm just trying to figure out whether we're sending them back to the zoning board and then they have to go back here to get an official approval?
It's on for a decision.
But it would just be a condition.
Right?
We could put it as a-
If you, if you adopt the resolution which I just said, it will be conveyed to the zoning board that they appeared before you, that you had no problem with this loc- with it being placed on the site.
As long as the zoning board.
And then they will go ahead and adopt their DNO.
Okay, so we don't need them to bounce back and forth between us again?
No.
Okay, that was what I was trying to get to.
Right.
Not that we don't-
We don't want to bounce through.
All right.
And it's early tonight.
All right, does anybody have any other questions? You see where it's located, um, it looks like there's some landscaping between the structure-
Let me see that, Laurie, I haven't seen it yet, so.
And this, um, side yard neighbor.
Well, I think the zoning board ascertained that there is, uh, there is already, uh, screening between your site and your neighbor's site along that residential bank.
Right, it's shown on the plane we're looking at.
I want to call out how much, uh, Mistakis has given to the town and contribute, and what wonderful citizens they are, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So-
Well, that just changed my mind.
That's all that counts.
All right, so do, do I have a motion to accept the, um, are we, the proposed ten-foot by forty-foot trailer in its present location indicated on a minor site plan uh, change, subject to the zoning board's approval of any variance or modification needed?
So moved. Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more trip back to the zoning board, I think, for final.
I think we're on the agenda already, Karen. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, have a good evening. Okay, um, one more time, I'm going to call, do we have anybody out front? I, I said I would call the country term Realty Echo Cottage Extension.
You know, and why did this, do they have a quote in there, I mean, I know we don't like to do that, but if you read it, basically, how he, you know, he was requesting extension, didn't hear anything, and then he got this note back saying that.
Well, I guess I, I was concerned, Mike, that we, we were promised that this only needed to be here through the Duchess County Fair, and it was supposed to be a temporary structure because we would have required them to do an actual site plan modification if it was going to be a permanent, um, part of their site plan.
Okay.
So I don't have a problem maybe giving them a short amount of time to come in to say, hey, we do want to make a site plan modification, or no, you know, we're going to find another location, but I don't think we should leave it for too much longer indefinitely as a temporary modification to the site. Uh, the other thing I would say is we also didn't, didn't have, um, official approval for this signage, and I think they're using a banner, um, on the building, so it's technically probably out of compliance with any sign regulations we have, but, um, again, I think we allowed it to happen on a temporary basis now, it's turning into something else.
Very valid, um, but we want to address the, I think they're already expired, right?
They are, but we normally, when somebody requests an extension prior to their expiration, we, we normally just say we'll put them on at the next meeting. It was our fault that we didn't do that, they did request it in June.
Okay.
So I guess, I, I would, I would be comfortable doing it-
It looks like Tom has something to say.
I'm recused on this one.
You're recused on, all right.
That's right. Would you like to speak as a citizen on this one? All right.
In lawyer-like terms.
Again, I, these guys aren't here, I, I really would have liked to hear, you know, what's going on and, and where they are with this, what their intention is, whether they want to make a site plan application, so I would be inclined to maybe grant
In light of that, I would say, I agree.
Thirty days and put them on to the next-
Put them on the next one.
Next agenda.
Did they know about tonight's agenda?
Well, he came in and I said he was going to go on the next agenda.
Well, we'll allow them one more for the November nineteenth, but I think if we don't see them at the November nineteenth meeting, to know if he intends to.
The town trucks could hook up to that thing and pull it off the site.
Um, so can I have a motion then to grant, uh,
Thirty day?
Okay, let's make it, let's make it a forty-day extension just to get us through the November, because November nineteenth will be our next meeting. A forty-day extension for the Echo Cottage on Route eighty-two through Novem- well, actually, let's not make it a specific number of days, through November nineteenth.
What?
But he expired August thirty-first.
Oh.
He made it, right, so I'm saying, instead of saying a number of days, extend him through November nineteenth to give him one more opportunity to come to the board, is that? I'm asking the board.
Why do we even have to extend it?
I made a motion to extend through November nineteenth.
Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so one more meeting, Pam, if we could just reach out to him and tell him if he's not there at that meeting, then the, he'll need to remove it by the next day.
Well, that won't happen, he can't remove it in one day, but a couple of weeks. Got to do electrical disconnect.
But it would become a building department issue at that point.
It's got a trailer hitch, doesn't it?
It's got a trailer hitch, doesn't it?
Well, but if he comes in and I want to make a permanent site plan application, we can give him a period of time to do that. I think the issue is we, we can't have this as a temporary.
What can they even put that on that site?
Exactly.
What?
I mean, do they even, even have a chance of putting it on that site?
I don't, I, we haven't, we never reviewed it as a permanent appearance, we, we never reviewed it for permanency, we, it was just supposed to be there for a less than a year.
Oh, I know what it was there for, I mean, it just, I don't know if they could legally get it on that site, period, but they want to try.
I mean, they'd have to do the analysis, there would be parking, there'd be, you know, the current coverage.
I just wanted to update the board if I can about another matter, just that if you recall, uh, you granted a permit, I don't want to mention the site plan because the property owner is really innocent party, but you had granted a special permit for onsite crushing of material, and then it was determined that truckloads of the material, five truckloads were removed from the site. We recently resolved that vi- uh, violation, they paid a thousand dollars civil penalty to the town and have taken steps to ensure that that's not going to happen again.
Thank you.
So I just want to let the board know that.
Good, excellent. All right, um, have any no further items on the agenda? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No. November sixth.
Thank you, wow.
There's no meeting on November sixth.
Do I have a motion to, knowing that there are no agenda items for November sixth, I have a motion to cancel.
I know Brian really.
Do I have a second for cancellation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so our next two meetings will be November nineteenth and December third.
Motion to adjourn.
So?
Second.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.